Hi, everyone. Thanks for coming to this meeting of the Finance and Operations Committee. It's a little bit early tonight. It's 4:30, and it is Wednesday, November 12th. And we are meeting in the Nashua High School North Boardroom. And so I am here, and Mr. Claffey is as well.
Here, present.
And then we have Crystal DeGray, Sean Smith, and Carrie, oh my goodness.
Curtis.
Carrie Curtis, thank you, thank you. So, let's see, you can go ahead and start.
All right, so we'll get started first with plant operations. We'll start with the Siemens service agreement, and then move on from there, and then we'll go with special education afterwards.
Okay.
Mr. Smith?
Good evening. This is a contract with Siemens HVAC controls. If you recall, we approved a contract for control technologies a couple of months ago for the majority of the school system. This provides coverage for the remaining two elementary schools plus the school administration building. They've provided a contract with three years, a 6% escalator between each year, and the two elementary schools that were proposed to do are Amherst Street and Sunset Heights, Burch Hill and May Dunstable. You might ask, what about them? They are still covered by warranty until next year. So I recommend the Finance and Ops Committee, and that's the Board of Ed, approve a three-year contract with Siemens Industry, Inc., the amounts of $11,640, $12,340, and $13,080 each year, funding from the plant operations HVAC line, 91.12226254243.
And if I can just add and clarify, so Mr. Smith brought this forward to the Board. I know at the last meeting, we did go ahead and do final approval for any purchases $25,000 and over. This was already in the works, and it's a three-year contract, so for tonight, we thought it made sense for it to come forward, so you folks were aware.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Claffey?
No, that was, my only question was whether the policy is for an annual appropriation or for a lump sum. So that was, we're doing, we're approving three years, that's over 25 grand, so I think you answered my question.
Okay. All right, I'll make the motion then, I guess. A motion to approve the three-year contract with Siemens Industry, Inc., in the annual amounts of $11,640, $12,340, and $13,080. Funding is from the plant operations HVAC maintenance line, 91.1.222620.54243.
Second.
Thank you. Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. That passes. Okay, so the next one is the electrical service?
Yes, this one's just informational. So our contract to provide electricity to all the schools was with Direct Energy, ran out the end of October. Again, they provide the supply, what we actually use, and Eversource still bills us for the delivery of said electricity. We sent an RFP out to obtain competitive quotes, and the plan is to make a contract award commencing in January 2026. The RFP went out this past Friday. I did a two-stage RFP, one is to provide their qualifications and indication of interest. That's due in a couple of weeks, and then once I receive those and decide on who should go forward with, then we will actually bring a contract to the Board of Ed at its December 15th meeting. Reason why we would not go through this committee again is because when they provide a quote, it's generally good for 24 hours only, because it's very much tied to how the market goes, so that can go up and down significantly overnight. Hopefully, things are pretty settled right now, but that's why we'd do it for the December 15th meeting.
So when I read this, I was wondering, is Direct Energy still supplying our electricity right now?
No, because when the contract ran out, we defaulted to the Eversource's rate. So we did, I did ask them for what they refer to as a bridging contract, in other words, to get us through to December, January. Their rate they proposed was 13%.
Pardon?
I'm sorry, 13 per kilowatt hour. And Eversource's rate is 11.2 cents per kilowatt hour, so it's significantly less than Direct Energy. Direct Energy did also suggest a one-year contract, a little over 10 cents, but we felt we could probably do better in the long run if we go for a multi-year contract.
So were we paying the 13 cents kilowatt?
We're paying 7 cents a kilowatt hour.
Seven? Oh, wow.
It'd go up significantly regardless of what we do.
Yeah.
So those were the options we had in front of us, so we decided to just go out with an RFP again and solicit multiple-year quotes from multiple vendors.
I think just to add to Mr. Smith's point, we had several conversations about this, and just based off of the cost and the increase, we're hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we're hearing probably anywhere from a 20% to 30% increase is what's coming. It makes sense at this point to go out for an RFP and see what is the best rate that we can go ahead and get. So to Mr. Smith's point, we'll come back in December and go ahead and be able to bring those recommendations forward and then award the RFP at that time.
Okay. The way that this works with Eversource providing the delivery side, how much were we paying Eversource?
It's, so the total bill, because I'm with Eversource right now. Let me back up. I was with Eversource. I then went to Nashua Community Power. I talked to Doria Brown, the city's energy manager, she said they're dropping that whole program starting in January. Otherwise, that might have been an opportunity for us to try and save money.
Okay.
I'm not sure I can answer your question. I'm not sure what portion
Yeah.
Eversource charges. I want to say it's around 11 cents per kilowatt hour too, but I'd have to double-check.
So right now, we're paying like 7 cents a kilowatt hour to Direct Energy and then additional fee to Eversource?
Correct.
And so when we get an RFP and we start ordering, or someone else is supplying our electricity, will Eversource still be delivering it, or will that, they will be?
Yes, they're entrenched, can't, they own all the wire, all the poles, all the infrastructure behind moving electricity, so that's a fixed cost with that. We don't have, the Public Utilities Commission sets that rate.
Okay, cool. Well, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Claffey?
I was going to say too, I think when we stepped back and looked at like the overall total, even just signing for like the next three months or the next year, it was pretty substantial, so it made the most sense to go out for an RFP at this time.
Okay. All right, that sounds good. Thank you for letting us know.
That's all I had.
Okay.
Just one heads-up related to plant operations. So in December, from a timing standpoint, we will also bring forward the capital improvements that will be recommended and suggested for fiscal year '27. So just as a heads-up, that will be coming forward in December as well.
Okay, that's always fun, to see what we would like to do.
That'll actually go through this committee though, before it gets to the full Board.
Okay. All right, that's great. So we get to do it twice?
Yes.
Nice. I look forward to it.
All right. Thank you.
Have a nice night.
All right, so the next agenda item and topic is related to special education and related to either new or contracts that are renewed. So there are a handful of contracts that are in front of you that, some of them, we needed to go ahead and sign in order to provide services for our students, and some of them are new contracts that are coming forward. So I did ask Carrie Curtis to be here with us this evening to talk about some of the specifics, if there are specific questions related to the contracts that are sitting in front of you.
Okay.
So.
Before, before, before you start, I just, I forgot to say that Dr. Andre was here, I think, so I wanted to make sure that I said it, so it was shared from the recording. Thank you. Oh, and Ms. Lopez has arrived. Thank you, Ms. Lopez, for coming. Okay.
Excellent. So I guess if we want, we can just start super high level from the contracts that are in front of you. We would be looking to go ahead and have all these contracts approved. They'd be under the Special Education Contract Service line. Just one caveat, the amounts that are in here are to not exceed totals, so as of this time, if we go ahead and utilize these contracts for the full school year, this is the total cost we are anticipating. Of course, this potentially could change depending on students' needs and students who are identified or students moving in.
Okay, let's see. Are these all, are all these contracts set up with the, with the fact that you can say if you don't need the services, you can back off from them, you give them like a 30-day notice or a 60-day notice?
All of these, with the exception of one, have a 30-day termination clause. White Birch has a 60-day termination clause.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Claffey, Ms. Lopez, do you guys have any questions?
I just want to, have we voted on any of these before, for this fiscal year?
So yes, that's a great question. You've already seen a couple of these vendors come forward. Constellations, we actually have another program at Sunset. That contract came forward, I think it was in June or July. At that time, it was Constellations. We thought it was for the full district, it was for Sunset. You have seen probably White Birch. White Birch, we do have a couple contracts with them as well that have been approved prior regency, we've utilized in the past. That is for a one-to-one nurse, so.
So we've approved contracts with these vendors, but not these specific contracts?
That is correct.
That's what I should have said.
Yep. Thank you for clarifying.
When I was looking through them, I noticed that a lot of them have, say that they will include special education teachers. So this is good. I don't know if you guys could tell me, like, how many full-time, how many full-time special education teachers these guys would be providing in total?
So Next Steps is providing one, Faxis is providing two or three, Stepping Stone is one, and White Birch, I believe, is just SLPs and BCBA's at this time.
Okay.
Again, with some of this work, this would be the plan to go ahead and hire this talent on our own, so if we cannot hire a special education teacher or an SLP on our own throughout this school year, then yes, we will be utilizing these contracts for the full year. But the intention is that we're continuing to recruit, and our recruiting efforts from the HR department to hopefully find some of this talent on our own.
Have we worked with all of these groups before?
We've worked with a number of them. Constellations is a new vendor for us. Mamadabi has been with us for a number of years. Next Step Behavioral Services is new, however, we've worked with the owner in a different fashion under another company, so we're very familiar with the owner. Faxis is a new company for us. Stepping Stones is part of Constellations, so they're a sub-separate group, but still under the Constellations umbrella. Regency Home, we've worked with, and then White Birch, obviously, we've worked with, and Pro Care Therapy, we've worked with as well. One of the, one of the changes and differences between this year's contract, in addition to the termination clauses and the not to exceed or the up to exceed amounts, is all of these contracts, if the teachers work out and we do end up using them throughout the full year, and we do want to convert them into district staff, we do have the ability to do that without, without having to pay a fee or a penalty.
Oh, that's really great. Do you know if that would actually be a possibility, if, if the amount of money, I know that like contract services cost so much, but that the people who are actually doing the work aren't really the ones who get the extra money, so, because it goes right through the business. But do you know if the amount of money that they actually make is similar to the amount that we pay our special education teachers?
I can't answer. I would be speculating.
Okay.
I would bet that there is an administration fee that's built into the contract, so they're not getting all of it. I do know so far that the buildings have been very happy with the, with the contracts, or the contractors that are there, and they've, some of the contractors have already approached the building administrator about hoping to be able to stay on and continue within, within the district.
That's really, that's really great, and I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. Anything else?
I, I just had a question about the wording. When we look at, all right, the computer just jumped. Okay, so when we look at the memorandum and it says at the end, "Contract not to exceed", oh no, that's, "Funding to be charged to the operation budget offset by salaries and benefits." Can you help us understand exactly what that is? I believe that I understand what that is, but I guess it's, it's a two-part question, because then it's difficult, because the contract for Constellations is signed for 8/26/2026. So I wanted to just make sure that I was understanding.
So I'm going to jump in, and I'll let Mr. Curtis jump in afterwards too, if there's additional clarity. So I believe what your first part of your question is, is under each line item, it says "Funding to be charged to the operating budget offset by salary and benefits." As we've discussed several times, any of our open positions that we currently have, we are able, if we're hiring a contractor, we are able to go ahead and move what is budgeted from a wage-dollar amount for that specific position over to contract services to go ahead and offset the cost. Now, what we have shared in your meetings past is, unfortunately, because of the cost of the contracts, there's not always a one-to-one correlation. So for an example, if a SLP was in our budget at, call it $70,000 a year, and the benefits was also in our operating budget, what we're able to move is that wage-dollar amount of, call it 70K, into contract services to help offset some of the costs related to hiring somebody as a contract service person. So that is like our business justification rationale, to be able to say, we have these openings, we need this support staff for our students, we're able to offset some of this cost based off of wages of open positions, but it's not always a one-to-one correlation, if that makes sense.
So later on, you'll see in the transfers on entry number 79, is that we'll be moving approximately $880,000 from salary lines over to contract services. So that's where you'll see the transfer happening.
Okay, I guess my question was like the benefits, so the, just the way that it was stated, but thank you so much for going into so much detail. I'm sure everyone appreciates it. I just wasn't sure that the benefits line, that we could spend that money, and then again, it hasn't been addressed that this won't be paid to 8/26/2006, according to the service agreement?
So I'm going to double-check that. I think for clarity, you are correct in saying, I have said many times over the years, we cannot touch the benefit money.
Okay.
So the example of if somebody's budgeted at $100,000 of wages and their benefits costs $25,000, we don't get to move $125,000 over. So I think from the memorandum, it probably should just say, "Funding to be charged to operating budget offset by salaries," because we don't, we're not allowed to touch the benefit money. Your other question related to when it was signed, I don't believe we pre-signed any of this for '26. Stuff should have been signed as of, oh, good catch, I did sign it as of 8/26/26, so we need to update that. It should not say '26, it should say '2025. So that is for this fiscal year of expenses, not for 2026.
Yes, so one of the, one of the other key important things that we've been doing with contracts as we're renewing them, there traditionally had been a lot of automatic rollovers, where it just would continue to roll over every year. So we've stopped that, and we've stopped that as a practice. So at the end of every school year, so the, whatever the calendar year is, in June something, we usually go by June 30th, this contract will terminate, and then if we elect to renegotiate the terms, we'll do that. Again, if the, if we, if it's a contractor that we'll be doing, that we'll be using during the extended school year service as well, we'll do a separate contract for that period as well.
Any, any other questions? Okay, all right, well, so I just, I don't want to, I don't want to make the motion without acknowledging the fact that, you know, it's, our contract services continue to rise, and it's very concerning to us on the Board and to the city as well. That being said, we need to provide the services for the kids, so I'm going to go ahead and make the motion, and, you know, we, you know, we'll discuss it more at the full Board. So, okay, so I make a motion to approve the special education contracts listed on the FNO memo dated November 12, 2025, under their corresponding accounts.
Second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Okay. And, okay, and others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. So that's unanimous. Thank you.
I didn't want to cut you off, but I also want to make sure that we address your last statement related to the concern, related to special education contract services. So the next topic that is in here is a special education funding and expendable trust recommendation. This kind of ties into some of the concerns that I'm sure the Board has, but also us as the administration team. We have been looking at contract services, we've been looking at our overall student needs and population related to services that we are legally required to go ahead and provide our students. And unfortunately, if we cannot find the staff on our own in order to legally provide the services we need to, we do have to contract service these staff members. So we are continuing to monitor it. I think if folks look back at the September 9th meeting, which was very early, we started talking about contract services. I believe I brought it forward to say, here's a presentation of what we've seen over the last several years, here's the total cost that we have seen over the last three to five years, and we've even looked at trends over the last 10 years. And I know it's not just us here in Nashua that is struggling to find talent. I was on a call earlier today with New Hampshire ASBO and other business administrators throughout the district. I think a lot of folks are struggling to find this talent on their own. We know a lot of kids or students aren't going into education, you know, so the recruiting aspects and stuff has made it a lot harder. So we are looking at it, we are taking it extremely serious, and to the credit of the administration team, I would say, you know, we really have done our due diligence this year to try to put in verbiage that says we can only go up to a certain dollar amount. And these are maximums, right? So ideally, without cutting any services that are truly required by law, hopefully, we don't have to spend this much in contract services, but as folks know, this is a data point, a snapshot in time, and as we continue to move forward, I've always said we need to continue to be transparent with what's coming, so that we don't end up six months from now and people are saying, I didn't know about any of this. So let's talk a little bit about the recommendation that's in front of you folks, from Dr. Andre and I, to the Board of Ed and the Board of Alderman. I believe the Board of Alderman will receive this tomorrow evening, if they haven't already. There is a meeting towards the end of November to talk about this at the Board of Alderman level, from a public hearing standpoint, and then it wouldn't be finally approved until December. So I'll kind of start, and then ask Dr. Andre to step in wherever he sees fit. So as I sit back and we as an administration team truly look at our costs related to contract services and out of district tuition, if we look at what we've spent, what we've already committed to for a maximums, as I said back in September, I'm, I don't know if concerned's the right word, but I am seeing there is an area that we're going to need some additional funding. Now, is this additional funding truly just for this year? Potentially? Potentially not. I think some of this additional funding could be utilized for us doing a three- to five-year strategic plan on where do we see the true cost being. So our recommendation, and we've been in contact with the city, Dr. Andre and I actually meet with the city and the mayor's office every Thursday for a standing meeting. The city of Nashua, my understanding is, they are currently looking at some of their unused fund balance. Based off of some of that unused fund balance, they are bringing forward some recommendations on how to spend that money. We on the school district side feel very strongly that a recommendation of $3 million of that unused fund balance should be transferred into our trust fund. Our trust fund is something that does roll over year over year. It's not a one-time use it or lose it. So again, if we need some of that money this year, we're able to utilize it. If we need some of the money next year, and FY '27, to maybe bring down the overall expenses and budget increase that we're looking for, we could use that as a strategic plan as well. And then we're not ready to make a recommendation yet to go ahead and utilize some money out of the fund balance related to the special education, special revenue account, but from a planning standpoint, as we've seen this cost continue to increase year over year, I think it makes the most sense to talk about recommendations and some solutions, and if our cost is truly going to be X amount of millions of dollars in contract services, what are we doing to plan for this as we move forward?
Dr. Andre?
There was a lot there, so I just wanted to see if there was any questions before I added on.
Do you have any, Ms. Lopez?
I don't, I don't have any questions. I have, yeah, so I guess it would be a question. So looking into just the wording of this memorandum, thinking So looking into just the wording of this memorandum, thinking about all the funding that has gone away, right? But this is money, this is $3 million we want to ask for so that it's not, it doesn't have a current use. It always could be put to current use, but we're not asking for, for a specific reason? Or am I missing that part? Like, that's my question. That's why I said I wasn't really sure, I was going to wait, I, maybe I should have waited to hear what Dr. Andre said. But my understanding from this is we're asking from the surplus of what the city has for $3 million to sit in a revenue account so that in a case we need it, that we would just have it, but we wouldn't be able to officially say where it would go or what it would do, because special education, the way that fund is set up is so broad. Like, if, if we're saying for contract services, then we put that into a line item, right? We haven't created the 2027 budget yet, so we're asking for some, we'll be asking for something then, and then we're asking, just in case, let's have this money. So it was just kind of, if you could, Mr. Gray, I'm sorry, Dr. Andre, I know you were getting ready to speak. So my question was, I have often asked about being proactive instead of reactive, and I feel like that this is part of that, but also there's no designation for what the funds will actually be going towards. Because in March, when we create our budget, we'll be asking for exactly what we want. So then particularly, if we apply for the fundings and the grants and things that have usually carried us through, this would just be $3 million sitting in a account just in case, because I've often asked this question, at budget time or at the time, well, which accounts can we pull from?
All right, let's, let's, let's let Dr. Andre to crystal answer.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't want to cut you off, so I was, I was jotting down a couple notes, so hopefully I can answer everything you're asking for throughout. So I picked up one of the words you said is proactive. Hands down, I would say this is a proactive measure. I would say as we step back and look at contract services, out-of-district tuition related to special education, over the last three to five years, we've seen a substantial increase. With that being said, now is the time that the City of Nashua is looking at its unspent fund balance. Remember last year too, we gave them about $4 million back in benefit money that we as a school district did not spend. So my understanding is they have some type of unused fund balance that they're reviewing now, that they're going to go ahead and start to ask to be able to utilize it. The expendable trust related to special education, if this is approved, it would be $3 million deposited into that special education expendable trust. There are very strong guidelines around what we can and can't utilize that for. So if that gets deposited there, we can only use it for special education cost, whether they're contract services, whether it's out-of-district tuition. That is different than the special revenue account. So that expendable trust is something that does roll over year over year. I have said in the past, those trust funds, in my opinion, should really be more of like our emergency accounts. We do have a little bit of money in the expendable trust right now, I think it's about $200,000. But this is separate than the special revenue account, and also separate from our operating budget.
Just in general, this is, again, it's, our standard meetings with the city have been very beneficial, because this is the first time in my three years that we work with the city on being proactive. In the night that this goes to the Board of Alderman, there'll be another, a number of other special appropriations and motions made that night, where the city is looking to create other trust funds, so investing in the future. So this is a larger part of the city plan to make sure that we're being proactive. So again, I think the big word is, this is proactive before we get into too much of an emergency. I want to reiterate where, just with the contract services, if we look at just a number of FTEs that we planned for in March, we're plus or minus five in the FTEs in, say, for our educators or special education. Because we haven't been able to find them, it's cost us 1.5 as much because it's through contract services. So we budgeted correctly on how many people we might need. Unfortunately, we haven't found them in-house, it's just costing us more. So again, I think the big one is this, this has really been a collaborative proactive approach with the city to make sure that we do not run into any kind of, and I hate the word, like deficits or emergency meetings that we have to transfer money. And so, and at the end of the day, we know that we have to provide the services to the students, and that's first and foremost of our responsibilities.
Mr. Claffey, you got a question?
I did. I'm curious about the chronology of when the state says you should, kind of, can you align where the state tells us what they expect to give us, what they give us, and how that aligns with our budget season?
You want to go through it, or we were walking through it tonight?
And my guess is, part of this contingency fund is you don't know what the political environment's going to be next year, so you have to plan for that. And to say, I don't know that you can say where this money's going to go, except we're pretty sure we're going to need in special education.
Absolutely, yeah. I think it's safe for us to sit here and say, whether it's this year, maybe it's next year, the year after, we're gonna need some additional funding to help with special education, contract services, and tuition out of district. Otherwise, as we move forward with our budget cycle, we potentially would be looking at like a 10% budget if we put everything in our budget for next year, which, as we know, is not sustainable. It doesn't make sense, it's not fair to the taxpayers. So how do we truly, again, create like a three-to-five-year plan to say, we've seen special education increase, here's what the cost has been over the last, you know, 10 years, here's our suggesting, suggestion, excuse me, in the next three to five years? So when it relates to state funding, we actually have a call next week to talk about the FY ' '27 state funding and how adequacy aid will be, what that dollar amount is. So this time of year is usually the time of year that we get what I call, and the state calls, your preliminary estimates of what your revenue is going to be for next year. We'll see what happens with adequacy aid. We've heard some mixed opinions on it, might go up, it might go down. Depending on how quickly they solidify the con val case, we potentially could see adequacy aid increase for next year, which this year, we saw an increase to that as well. I think as we build FY '27's budget and future years, and that's .3 on here just from a solution, I think we do need to look at, state funding has been increasing. So the state has been helping us in that total pie of money with some of these increased costs, and how do we continue to kind of work with the City of Nashua to be able to potentially have some either higher budgets or some of that money into some of these trust funds?
That money goes to the city, right, when it comes?
That is correct.
So when does, when did the city receive the funds for fiscal year '26 for the school district?
So they've already received one payment. There's payments that come three times a year. I actually had looked at it today with Dr. Andre, we were looking at what the total was. So they usually deposit three adequacy payments throughout the year. Medicaid is kind of sprinkled quarterly and sometimes towards the end of the year. So throughout the year is when we're receiving our revenue.
Go ahead.
How close is it to the budget that we've, for this year?
So currently, I would say we're on track, if you take the payment and multiply that by 3%, excuse me, by three payments, we're fairly close to the overall increase, or excuse me, the total revenue. I think as we look at Medicaid, Medicaid, I would always say, is kind of one of those buckets that we in years past have maybe billed a lot for, but the percentage, we don't control. I think there's been some talk too, that the Medicaid percentage this year is going up. So I, I think I would be interested to see maybe three months from now what Medicaid is, because like at the end of last year, we actually brought in more revenue in Medicaid than what we originally budgeted.
I think, I think, I think that, Mr. Claffey had a question?
I should have been more specific. So when we finalized our budget, the, we had an estimate from the state, that's all we had. And, sorry.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, I apologize. So when we finalized our budget, we actually had a concrete number of what adequacy aid should be for FY '26. And when we finalized our-
It should be, I don't, that's, to me, that's a mixed sig, a mixed message. We had a concrete, a, a, a concrete, what did you, a concrete-
We had a concrete number.
Of what it should be.
Yeah.
So that's why.
So the state of New Hampshire always gives an estimate, usually in this November, December timeframe, of what adequacy aid's going to be. We build our budget based off of that. As we get closer to our budget being approved, we then go ahead and get what the numbers will be for state funding. Sorry if that was confusing.
So I, I have a question. You mentioned billing for Medicaid and Medicare. For this year, haven't we changed our policies on who's going to be billing for Medicaid or Medicare? Because we, a lot of what we've previously billed for through the district, we won't be, we will be passing it on to the providers to bill for their revenue. We talked about it at the last meeting.
That's a different.
Yeah, I think there was some confusion on, I think there's two items kind of being blurred together. So when I talk about Medicaid, I'm talking about services that our paraeducators and our service providers are providing to our students currently. They have to fill out Medicaid logs, and then Medicaid comes back and says X amount of percentage is what they're going to go ahead and fund.
Yeah, Ms. Lopez, what you're referring to, we, we have like a contract with, like Harbor Care, and they, they provide services to some of our students that's over and atop of what Mr. Gray's talking about. So those are two separate conversations, but in our revenue sheet, that you'll see that we anticipate around $500,000, or we budget for around $500,000 a year in Medicaid reimbursement. So that's what we're talking about, that bigger revenue, not the Harbor Care contracts or, or the other ones, that's a separate kind of conversation. But the Medicaid reimbursement, we also should note goes back to the city as a revenue. So if we budget for $500,000 and we are able to bill, we get reimbursed for $1 million, that extra $500,000 goes to the city and not the school department. So it's, we haven't been short on how much revenue's coming, but we've been, the last couple of years, the Medicaid reimbursement has been higher, and that revenue goes back to the city.
Yes, I know that there, when, when Mr. Gray did our special education presentation back in September, we noticed that there was, that the Medicaid reimbursements have been rising, and I think that's, you know, you guys should be congratulated for that, because that's the hard work of the people that are, you know, keeping the data and making sure that it gets to the state correctly and to the federal government correctly. So, so thanks for that, it makes a big difference. Ms. Bishop, did you have a question?
With, with it coming from the unused fund balance, and this is me putting on my obnoxious Pollyanna hat that I know you all love, was this something that was recognized within the city and they reached out and said, can we plan appropriately with this money? Or did we go to them and say, we're anticipating shifts and we want to plan for it? Or, I'm just wondering, like, who is nice enough to be like, hey, we have some extra, how can we be helpful?
I have to give a, it's been really collaborative, like, we've talked about, like, how can we both be solution seekers? This issue is not going away, we've been talking about it for a number of years. And I think from the city, they saw, again, how are they strategically investing in the city? So I think it was really proactive on the city to say to us, like, how do we set up trust funds, how do we invest some money, so that, to Mr. Gray's point, we're not asking for 4% or 4 points, like, if we included this $3 million as a just-in-case, we'd be asking the city for a 7.5, 8% increases. And we know that's unreasonable year over year. So this is a good way to use some of the unused money, be proactive, and invest in a savings account.
And part of your, part of your proposed solutions is kind of doing a longer-term plan for the budget, so not just doing year to year and just like, fingers crossed, we get 3%. But what you're doing, which is presenting the anticipated year-over-year increase in contract services, which is special ed and ELL, and then going to the city and having those conversations, is this a way that we can solidify a longer-term solution and not just, like what Ms. Lopez said about being proactive? Is this the best way that we can be proactive, is really kind of crystal balling these numbers?
Yeah, so, it's just funny, when we say crystal balling and we have our own crystal, so it threw me off a little bit. But it is, like, we're at the point right now, at the end of this year, we settled four contracts this year.
Good job.
We'll settle two more contracts come this spring. And then even using Mr. Smith, he's forecasting energy costs, so how do we forecast over the next three years, right? So we know what the teachers' contracts, give or take, you know? So we, we should be able to say, what does our budget look like within plus or minus a couple percentage points for the next three years? So, and the variable being special education and contract services. So if we know that we have some trust fund set aside, you know, just again, be able to forecast, I think it helps the city on setting tax rates and that aspect, so, because there's, again, one Nashua of, you know, what do we need in the police department, the fire department, so it's able not just come this spring and it's a sprint on who's getting the money.
Can, can I ask one more question?
Yeah, sure.
So in addition to solutions, are we able to, and I have not talked to you guys about this, and I'm sorry, I hate throwing you guys questions that I haven't prepped you for, but, and I'm also kind of stealing a little bit of something that Ms. Lambrou and I talked about. Is there any plan with HR to work on how we can best get talent into the city, not just planning for contract services, but is there like some sort of magical HR overhaul where we're able to more actively recruit maybe graduating college kid? I see, look at this.
Oh, my goodness, this is a good reaction, I like this.
Well, because there's the financial solution, which is the contract services, which is the Band-Aid. And then there's actively recruiting, maybe not even in New Hampshire, but more kind of East Coast and getting people in, just, we have a great HR department who apparently can just continue to take on more and more tasks. But is that, is that part of the solution, the long-term solution as well?
Okay. I was smiling because you're talking some of my old wheelhouse, and I, I've continued to, I think we've all kicked around some solutions and ideas, but I would honestly love to see us as a district potentially test pilot, hiring a recruiter. I hear it's very different than my former world of financial services, but part of me wonders if we can strategically try to have a recruiter that is passively reaching out to say, oh, hey Jen, I know your teacher, or para, or do you know anybody, or referral, then we're able to hopefully attract more talent into the district. So we really have been talking as a leadership team of, how do we get creative and potentially do some passive sourcing is what I would call it, versus you just- do some passive sourcing is what I would call it versus you just post a position and you hope that, you know, 50 people apply to all the positions you have or whatever that number is.
We're also working with Riviera right now. On a teacher pathways. So how do we recruit an almost guarantee? Like if you go through the Riviera program, you have a job in, in Nashwa, so we would be a lab school. I know the one that you're really interested in is, you know, do we look at, um, and we've had some preliminary conversations, um, around like, what do you do around housing? Right? So we know there's a housing shortage.
These guys have heard this from me for the last like years.
We're saying it in, in kind of in public and, uh, we've talked about, um, in several meetings and with some community, um, organizers around, you know, what does it look like for future housing coming in that's dedicated to please fire EMTs, educators, paraeducators, so that there is, um, a housing allowance that's going forward to recruit people.
Sorry, I just need to say I threw out that email like 2021.
Yeah, so, so I think there is some, again, what I'm really proud about in our like strategic plan moving forward is that there is, you know, that line of how will we curious on moving forward on the continuous improvement and especially focus area four is about their R and D, you know, we reimagining that, the way that we're doing business. And that's the culture of like, what is recruiting or that aspect of it or, but is it more as a city that, um, we're working together to change the, the way that we're, um, recruiting people in and that people want to live in this great city.
Yeah. Um, include me on those, those invites. I'd love to control all that. Just kidding.
I think too, as, uh, Mr. Curtis had said, one of the big changes in the contract is that most of the contracts hopefully have the verbiage that if we truly like somebody and they love working for the Nashwa School District, uh, we could go ahead and hire them, uh, at the end of their contract, um, ideally without a fee. So, um, I continue to say we need to be an employer of choice for sure. And, you know, we want everybody to come work at the Nashwa School District and how do we make that happen?
Yeah. And the other aspect I just want to add, and I'm sure it'll come up, um, in future meetings, whether it's Monday night at the, the full board or at the Board of Alderman, is how do you control the cost? Right? So what does our special education system look like? So we've been having a lot more internal conversations, which can be, um, difficult. Uh, we just had our professional development day last week. On are we collecting enough data, um, to justify the amount of supports in IEPs? Right? And so it's almost like Goldilocks. Is it too much till, too little? What's the right amount of supports? You know, we've been doing an analysis on, in some cases, we might be providing too much support. And so how do you have those conversations on, you've been getting access to X, Y, and Z, the data doesn't show that, um, or the student may or may not qualify for special education. Those are difficult conversations. And then what's the so what from that? Or in other cases, uh, you know, do we need to provide more conversations? So this is going to be a lot of conversations on, you know, between our regular ed teachers, our special education teachers, our administration on what does the referral process look like and what the special education work, um, look like? And that's where, you know, we're looking at these contracted services and I, I think we need to look internally and reflect on, you know, what's the academic return on the investment? Are they making a difference or can you reinvest the money in a different way? And those are hard conversations.
I, I had a question about, um, the special education special revenue. I didn't know if we are on, on target to get around the same amount as last year from that, um, or if we will, might be making, getting more revenue from that than we had planned.
So the special education special revenue account, uh, the revenue that comes into that is for our programs, so our Signs of Learning, our Brentwood program. As of right now, it seems like we are on track. We did get a little bit more last year than prior years. So for this year, we had gone ahead and budgeted, I think about 800,000 is what we anticipated, looking at kind of the historicals. I think it's still a little too early in the year to say, are we gonna hit 800,000 or is it going to be higher or lower drastically? But we definitely have a lot of interest in those programs for sure. And we do have somebody helping us, uh, do all the billing and stuff who was here prior.
Okay.
Yep.
I have another question as well, because I, I keep hearing about other schools in New Hampshire that are really having a lot of issues. And, um, you know, they have their town meetings coming up, the SB two towns and stuff. And, um, are we prepared to like, you know, um, to help those other, like to be there to like provide a, a safety net if those other schools cannot provide the services that their special education kids need? I mean, I don't know exactly. Is this a crazy question or?
What's that? Well, I hate to say it. It's, you know, you know, if we're, if we tuition and stu, if they tuition in students, then it, it's a tuition-based service. You know, I think already in our conversations, we're going alpha contracted services. And so if we're going to take in kids from other districts, what's going to be the cost to, to our students and?
Yeah.
Our bottom line. So, I mean, theoretically, like, we should be educating all students, no matter what zip code.
Yeah.
Right? So, um, I think that's morally the right thing to do, how we pay for it. I think it's a whole different thing.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Want to add on to that because I know one of the things that we've really tried to do, and this is just a kudos to you guys. One of the things that we've tried to do is really keep special ed inclusive and have, have all the kids be in whatever the least restrictive environment is. And I recognize how easy it could be for our district to just pull everyone together so we can have all the services in one place, which financially would work better, but is worse for the kids. So we do have this really easy option over here that's worse for the students, but financially good for us. And I'm glad that we're not taking that route. And I think it just goes to show that even when we have challenges in front of us, we, we don't back down from what is best for the kids. So just wanted to give you guys a kudos for that.
Okay. So is, any other questions?
All right. So let's see, I guess.
I don't think there's any motion you have to make. This was more informational and it will move forward to the board, uh, on Monday night.
Yeah, there, there is something in here.
Oh, she did add something. Okay, she must have changed after.
Whatever Ms. Cancela says is what I do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve the special education funding and expendable trust and forward it to the Board of Alderman.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey. And all those in favor say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. All right.
Wait, are you forwarding it to the Board of Alderman from this committee or is it going to Board of Ed first and then off to the Board of Alderman?
Should go to Board of Ed first.
Okay, just wanted to make sure you weren't skipping over us.
Should I add forward it to the Board of Education and then forward it to the Board of, okay.
No.
All right, good. Okay. Okay. All right. So now just the, um, the transfer reports.
Okay.
And then if you want to go through the financial stuff too.
Yeah, let's start with the financials if you don't mind, because I have that first.
Thank you for coming.
Appreciate it. Sorry about that. So when we look at, I'm on page 73, uh, related to the financial reports, in case anybody's following along. So just a couple of few things to point out. Retirement and separation pay is a little higher than what was anticipated. I think as some folks are aware, hopefully most folks are aware, we did have quite a few, uh, teachers and administration staff retire last year. So as of now, it looks like we're over by about $15,000 related to our retirement and separation pay. We're getting to the point in the year where most of that should be paid out at this point. We did have a couple administrators that have been here 25, 30 years and some of their, uh, retirement payouts or separation payouts from their sick, excuse me, sick time was pretty substantial. So that is just slightly over. Nothing I'm concerned about when we look at 51 wages in total this year. Pupil support services and contract services, which is in the 53s. So 53, 614, I had a question come in related to pupil support services. This category is actually for our OT and PT staff. Uh, we go ahead and do a contract service every single year with occupational therapy and physical therapy. Your 53, 614, that is, uh, the dollar amount that you're seeing in there for OT, PT. There's quite a bit that's already used. It's not 100% paid at this point, but because we have contracts, they are sitting, there's about 700,000 sitting in committed or encumbrance. That's because we do have contracts with our OT and PT folks. Same thing with contract services. You'll start to see, uh, contract services in total actually increase. I've already made one budget transfer. You'll see later in the transfer reports right at the start of this month. And then there's going to be a couple more coming to offset, as we've talked, some of those contract services, uh, with open positions. Um, as we heard from Mr. Smith, uh, electricity is going up. We probably could anticipate anything between 20 to 25% of an increase. As of this year, I think we'll be okay. It's going to depend on what happens with the RFP that comes back. The only other line item I just wanted to call out real quick is under the 55s. So the 55, 694 line, which is our tuition out of district, that is related to special education. We're hearing from a lot of the out of district service providers that they plan for next year to go up anywhere between seven to nine percent. So I've been working closely with, uh, Mr. Curtis and the special ed team as we build FY 27. That is one area we'll probably start to see increase. So just more or less a FYI on it.
Yeah, that, um, we've already used quite a bit, so any kind of, um, we'd have to definitely transfer money into there to cover it for the year, right?
So at this point, we have 1.6 million dollars sitting in committed. That is because we have contracts out there for students that are already placed out of district. I believe I shared this, but in years past, we didn't do contracts related to our out of district students. I am trying to change that. Some of the out of district, uh, service providers are willing to do it and some are not. We really should have a dollar amount in there as a committed contract, uh, for when we're placing these students out of district. It will allow us to budget a little bit better as well. So that 1.6 million isn't spent yet, but we are anticipating to spend it, um, at this point. So you, you're probably seeing that third row over. Uh, you're seeing a lot of money sitting in encumbrance right now or committed. That is, means a purchase order is against it.
Okay. All right, that's great. Thank you. I, I was a little concerned when I looked at it. I always, I am not used to looking at that encumbrance line. So when you pointed out, I'm like, oh, good. Excellent. That's great.
And it is drastically higher than prior years. So if you looked at the report from October 31st of 2024, so a year ago comparison, that encumbrance number is a lot higher this year. And it's because any of those contract services for special education or tuition out of district, I've been pushing that we actually put a contract in there and we encumbrance the money. Meaning if we've signed an agreement for 500,000, we're putting a PO in the system for 500,000.
Mr. Claffey had a question.
The, um, out of district tuition, would that be eligible from, would those funds be eligible from the $3 million contingency? They would?
Yes, they, yep. So that, uh, the expendable trust does cover tuition out of district if we need it, uh, more funds and, uh, contract services related to special ed.
Ms. Lopez?
So I had a question. How are we doing with the, um, special education transportation?
So as of right now, uh, transportation looks to be on track. Uh, last year, we saw regular transportation was slightly lower. Special ed transportation was slightly higher. So those two kind of offset each other last year in total from transportation. We had enough money. I will tell you, the one area we're seeing a pretty big increase is, uh, special education transportation related to some of our McKinney Vento. But we do have some federal grants that we're able to utilize. So at this point, I'm seeing that we're tracking, uh, but we'll definitely be keeping an eye on it if we think we're going to be over.
Um, Ms. Mr. Gray, any, any, um, financial information about the McKinney students, McKinney Vento students would be not in the operating budget, right? That'd be in a different place.
So yes and no. We try to cover, um, some of the costs related to transportation for our McKinney Vento students through the grant. If the grant cannot support the cost in total, then yes, we do go ahead and utilize our operating budget, uh, for some additional support.
Okay.
As of right now, we always try to go with first student. If first students, since they're a transportation company, if they're able to help support, um, our students and get them from point A to point B, they will. Otherwise, there could be a third party, uh, transportation company that we have to hire that at times becomes costly.
Okay.
Um, this year, we are doing exactly what we did last year related to a cost share, meaning if we have a student that lives in Manchester, but they're coming to Nashwa, the regulations are that Manchester and Nashwa split the cost. Same thing though, in reverse. If Manchester has a kiddo that's living here in Nashwa, we would need to split that cost with them as well.
Okay. All right. I don't have any other questions about this part. Do you, Ms. Bishop, you guys? Okay. All right, let's go on to the next thing then.
All right. So last agenda item is, uh, the transfer report. So this is transfers for October, although I do see one got scanned in related to November, which is fine, more or less just a talking point. So any questions related to the transfers with the exception of, uh, that very last one, which is 79? The transfer 79 is for some of those wages that we already moved over, uh, related to three school psychologists and some paraeducator positions to offset some of the contract service cost.
I actually had a question about the, um, the files that we, we purchased for, um, what Broad Street School that we purchased last month. That said it was coming out of the Welcome Center. And I don't know if that is related to ELL services or if, if that's all coming, all that money is coming from ELL. I don't know how that works, so just wondering. And I'm sorry, sorry to spring it on you. I didn't think of it to ask earlier.
No, it's fine. Were you going to say something? Oh, yeah. Sure. Yeah, so we had to with the, uh, purchase that we did make related to the filing system. Uh, that is for the Welcome Center. The Welcome Center did not have the accounting coding, uh, set up. So we did need to move some funds around. So when we brought it forward, we did explain that we were moving some of the money out of ELL, uh, into the Welcome Center, uh, to offset that cost. Next year, when we build the budget, we will make sure the Welcome Center has their own budget to start. But where it wasn't set up at the start of the year, we do have, we did have to make a budget transfer.
So we're not decreasing any services to ELL. The director has been in, involved with the process. So we, we made sure that, again, there's no decrease to ELL services or needs. But the files that are moving actually support the ELL department because when- But the files that are moving actually support the ELL department because when a student enters the building or re-registered, we need to pull up their files. And so our Welcome Center staff will be able to pull those files more readily. But there is no decreases. I just want to be clear with everybody, there's no decreases to ELL services or resources. And if the ELL department needed anything, Mr. Chopper is not shy to go into Mr. Gray's office and say, we have a need and how do we fund it?
Okay, all right, that sounds great. Ms. Lopez?
All right, I will draw.
Oh, okay. All right, then. I think, I don't see anything else that I'm interested in. Mr. Claffey? Ms. Bishop? Okay, then. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 26 October transfer report.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey. And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes unanimously. And I think that's it. So I'm going to make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 5:42.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks, aye. So we're adjourned at 5:42.